This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:30. This is the December 3, 2020 work session. It's all the way off. December 3, 2020 work session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. We ask that you please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. We'll start Open Public Meetings Act announcement. Michelle, please read that.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the November 30 of 2020 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Stouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you very much, Michelle. The next is a public comment. This is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public to comment. Anyone who wishes, from the public wishes to speak, please state your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes to address the governing body. There's no one here because we're, we're closed to the public, but the public may come in via video. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard at this time? Not seeing anyone. I will close the meeting to the public this time. Administration, now as we move to the administration part of the work session, we'll start with the agenda review. We have a full agenda tonight. We've been very busy. We've accomplished a lot. Minutes of the October 22, 2020 work and regular sessions are all listed for approval. Councilwoman Holman, you were absent that meeting, so you'll need to abstain. Okay. But everyone else can vote. Adoption of ordinances. The following ordinance will have second reading and public hearing tonight. That is ordinance 20-18, amending and supplementing Article 2, Chapter 26-25 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale. We discussed this at the last meeting. Ordinance establishes the eligibility requirements and promotional process of officers to the ranks of chief, captain, lieutenant, and sergeant of the Allendale Police Department. Councilman O'Connell, if either you or Ray would like to speak to this, I'd give you the opportunity. Ed, do you want to speak to this at all?
No, go ahead. Ray can talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think as we mentioned at the time of introduction, the purpose of the ordinance is to objectify the criteria for promotion. You know, this is an area that has been a hotbed for litigation in those municipalities that haven't had objectified ordinances. So here there are specific criteria to be evaluated in connection with the promotion and specific weighting of those criteria.
Great. So thank you very much, and thank you for everyone who worked on this. Resolutions 20-256 and 20-257, which can be read together, to authorize COVID-19 special emergency funds. So this came out of a finance meeting that we had. Councilman O'Toole, would you like to summarize or speak to this at all?
Sure. Resolutions 20-256 and 20-257 allow us to apply to the Division of Local Government Services to obtain approval for using the COVID-19 special emergency under Public Law 2020, Chapter 74, allowing us to defer the loss of revenue over a five-year period, and if needed authorize bond anticipation notes, which we probably will not need. The anticipated loss is $260,000, which is the amount that we've applied for.
Okay, great. Matt, thank you for that. And for the Finance Committee, I know we had, I guess, the meeting last week. And so thank you for everyone who participated in that. And next is 20-258, Authorized Capital Budget Amendment. Lissa, would you like to speak to that at all?
That's to amend an existing ordinance to add some funds just to finish out the acquisition of and signing of the property of 220.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. The introduction of ordinances. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. So we have six ordinances that we're introducing tonight. Let me try to describe them and group them together. So ordinance is 20-19 and 20-22, set the salary ranges for our non-union and Upsy union employees respectively. Ordinance 20-20 amends our water rates. Councilwoman Holman, would you like to at all speak to that one?
Sure. I think I talked a little bit about it last meeting in my, my committee report. But we have looked at what the expenditures have been this year for various repairs and things that need to be done within the system and feel that a rate increase is needed in order to ensure that we have the funds available to keep the water working in a balanced budget situation. Water is such an important component of everyday life, and I will be hosting a water, a virtual water meeting a week, next Wednesday evening. So I'm hopeful residents will tune into that, just to really get a better look at what the cost of water is and some of the reasons why we need to make sure we're investing into our infrastructure and covering breaks that do happen, as we just had happen last evening. So we will have a 10% water rate increase that will go into effect first quarter of 2021.
Great. Thank you very much for that and for all of your work on that committee. 20-21 is a bond ordinance that appropriates an additional $120,000 for expenses related to the acquisition of 220, 230 West Crescent. So either Lissa or Amy, would either of you like to speak to that? Amy, just, you're muted. Okay.
Yes, this is to help the continuation of the work that we're doing at 220, 230. For some soft costs, we still have a lot of work to be done. So this is just to make sure that we replenish the funds, and hopefully we won't be, we won't have to use it all, but it's just in case.
Great. Thank you. 20-23 repeal Section 30.3 of Chapter 26. It was adopted earlier this year and amends Section 31D regarding provisions, rates, and fees for off-duty law enforcement officer services and use of police vehicles. So there was duplicative language in two of our statutes or ordinances, and there were some either duplicative or inconsistencies. So Ray and Lissa and Chief Sherb worked together to, to work out those adjustments. Is that correct, Ray?
Yes, it is there.
Great. Thank you very much. And ordinance 20-24 authorizes the COVID special emergency appropriations that Councilman O'Toole spoke about earlier. So that is, that's it for the ordinances that we're introducing. The consent agenda, we have six consent agenda resolutions listed for approval. The bill list has, we will approve the bill list. So Matt, Amy, I'm sure you guys looked at it. As did I. Thank you. 20-260 is to authorize a refund for 2020 tax overpayment. So this is a routine resolution to refund property owners when we receive overpayments on their taxes. Next is 20-261, authorize an amendment, the lease agreement. We have a lease agreement for our cell tower with Crown, Atlantic, and on behalf of ATT Mobility, they have requested an amendment to the agreement. Our borough engineer, Mike Freeland, and borough attorney, Tom Borji, reviewed the request. And I think Tom prepared the amendment, and we're satisfied that we can approve this amendment, and it's in our consent agenda. Next is 20-262 to authorize a change to our deferred compensation plan. So the borough is amending our deferred compensation plan with AIG Balick. So we, we did that at the last meeting, but the paperwork that we were provided wasn't, wasn't correct. So now we're doing it again with the corrected paperwork. Okay, so that's the reason why it's on here again. And next is 20-263, authorize advertisement and receipt of bids for 230 West Crescent Avenue remediation project phase two. So this resolution authorizes us to go to bid for phase two of the 230 West Crescent remediation project. Amy, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, so this is, when we were initially doing the cleanup, we weren't sure what we would have to do as far as the caps. So this second phase would just be doing what's called an environmental cap on and around the remediation.
Okay, great. Thank you for that explanation. And next on the agenda, which was just added today because it was just provided to us this morning by the, by the union, this is to approve a memorandum of understanding tonight with our Upsy white collar unit employees, bringing us one step closer to finalizing the contract. We are very happy that we reached a resolution on the terms. We just got the paperwork today, and so it's added onto the agenda. So that's, that's a step in the right direction. And then at the, at the end of our regular session, we're going to be going, going into closed executive session via Resolution 20-265 to discuss two attorney-client privilege matters, an update on contract negotiations with the PBA, as well as potential litigation. And we also have a prospective personnel matter in the police department. So we don't go into closed session often, but there are certain times when it is appropriate for us and necessary for us to go into closed session. So we will be doing that at the end of our regular session. We go into closed session, discuss those matters that should be discussed in closed session, and we come out of closed session, we come back to the regular session, and then we adjourn then.
Right, and I think we just want to let the public know that there will be no action taken when we come back out to a public session.
Right, right, which is a very good point. So we will not be taking any formal action on these items once we return to open session. So if, if it's late, if it's late at night and you wanna, you don't have to, you know, you can, we'd be happy to see your face when we come back, but we're not going to be taking any action on these items once we return back to open session. And that's the end of the agenda review. So I still have some time. We can do some committee reports. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have a couple items for a closed session, as you had mentioned. OEM, we met with OEM via a Zoom meeting, and everybody's just making sure that the PPE and everything else is readily available. So if we need it, we have it, and as the weather gets colder, we think we're going to see more and more cases of the coronavirus. So we're just getting ready for that. Calls into headquarters, 14,287, 911 calls, 1,464, fire department calls, 150, EMS calls, we're up to 360. And Alex Helmer is now training for lead instructor. So he will be working with Kevin Ativado as lead instructors for the future lead program. And that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Great, and thank you. I know your, your committee's been very busy these last couple of weeks. Thank you for all of your hard work in that committee.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Sasso, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you. So the land use committee met about, just about 12 hours ago. So it's good to see you all back again.
It's been a long day.
It has been a long day. So we had a great meeting. We usually have good meetings, but we had particularly good meeting. And I want to thank Director of Operations Kistner for contributing to that by putting a good, solid agenda, very detailed bullet point, concise agenda out, which I added a few things to. And we really, we moved through it pretty quickly, and it was a productive meeting for all of us. We discussed some property maintenance issues. There are some significant ones that we're dealing with, but they're all moving forward. We discussed making some minor adjustments to our garage sale ordinance and our sidewalk ordinance. And just as a reminder, if you're within the sound of my voice, that repair and maintenance of sidewalks and curbs has, is, and always has been the responsibility of the homeowner. The exception is when a sidewalk is buckling or heaving or cracking as a result of a borough shade tree, which then the borough is responsible for the repair of that sidewalk. So if you have a sidewalk, take a look, make sure it's good. Don't wait until, we typically have only enforced it when somebody needs a CO when they're selling their house, and that becomes a huge fire drill, and people are running around with their hair on fire trying to get it done. And probably not the best thing to do. So we're going to try to be a little more proactive about it in the future by educating residents. And we're talking about some communication to get out there. So you'll have some time if you have a sidewalk that needs repair to get it done. And that's about it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Sasso, for that. Councilwoman Holman, would you like to give your report?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I, since our last council meeting, I had the opportunity to host the Northwest Bergen Mayor's Virtual Meeting. And thank you again to Mayor Bernstein for facilitating that opportunity. And it was great. I did a presentation, and then we had a really nice roundtable discussion. And all of the municipalities that own their own water utility were present, and that was great. The two big walkaways that were important, where I did feel that we got a positive response for some elected officials to have some interest in going and meeting with the NJDEP sometime during the first quarter of 2021, obviously it may be virtual, so that we could enhance our communication and representation, you know, within the NJDEP about how smaller municipal water systems work. And as they are producing new guidance, that they understand how that impacts not only the big, you know, Suez and, and the other big, you know, for-profit water utilities, but also municipal water utilities. And then secondly, to begin to establish sort of a Northwest Bergen drinking water working group. So that's something where I'm going to be sending out follow-up information to look at areas where we can collaborate, whether it's in sharing information on emerging contaminants that every municipality is going to need to be looking at, or shared, some sort of shared purchasing power. So I thought it was good. Ari, did you feel the same?
Yeah, I, I thought it was very good. I give you a ton of credit. The attendance was great. I think we had 25 to 25 people, which is double what we normally get, more than double. Very spirited debate or conversation. They were interested. And I, and I thought you touched on so many points that were relevant and important to every borough or municipality that, that was there, and there was buy-in. So I thought, I've been attending those as the mayor for, for, you know, close to two years, and that was the, the most informative one that I've been to. So I think, I think you did a great job.
Yeah, I mean, I think it just goes to show how important water is. And it's, you know, to all of our residents that we really need to ensure that we protect, preserve, and, you know, enhance both our water distribution system as well as our water treatment. And so on that note, I'll say that, again, we are going to have, and I've been working on the presentation and talking with Suez on some of, you know, the points to make sure I clarify them about what will be presented next Wednesday evening on December 9. There will be a virtual community water meeting, so the link will be on the Facebook. It was in the November happenings. So hopefully residents and the rest of the borough council, I hope you also attend. I'd appreciate that. On the, the part about water quality, our water testing have all shown that Allendale Water meets or exceeds the NJDEP standards. And just a reminder that the NJDEP standards are one of the most strict in the country, which is great, and residents should feel good that this is the case. We did, as a water committee, authorized testing for a new contaminant, which is 1-4 dioxane. And I was able to review the report, but I didn't just make sure it was just me. We'd also had Suez in their lab department review the report. And the good news is, at this point, our levels are very low, and they do not indicate any concern. And so at this point, we would not need to plan for, you know, any new treatment for 1-4 dioxane. And the other emerging contaminants of the PFOSes will be talking about during the December 9 meeting. So I think that's it.
Great. Thank you very much, Liz. Amy, we still have time. Would you like to give your report?
Yes, sure. No problem. So 220, 230 is coming along. We are finishing up a lot of our documents. We just handed in one of the RDAs to Hampshire, so another lawyers will be going back and forth. And then simultaneously, we're working on this other agreement called the Municipal Facilities Agreement, which talks about all the ins and outs when the municipal building will be getting built. And we still have a lot of work to do there. This is where the guaranteed maximum price comes into play. So this is where we really get into a lot of the details. The remediation is still coming along. As we mentioned, we just went out, we're going to go out for bid for the cap. But right now, we're still waiting on some tests to come back. As we mentioned in the past, we will be looking to our insurance to cover some of this delineation work and remediation work, and we were also going out for some grants. There's two more land use board meetings for this project on the schedule for December 14th and December 16th. The streetscape project is moving along very well. The lights will be in in February, and they will be installed. As you saw, the wreaths are up downtown, which are not on our new lights, but it makes the downtown look really festive with the new pavers. And unfortunately, the festival, holiday festival got canceled, but I think it looks really pretty right now downtown. So thanks to our DPW for getting those nice wreaths up there. And I just wanted to remember, remind everybody that they, this is it through a grant. There's a three-phase grant for $662,000, and we were just actually awarded another grant for $250,000. So we will be going up and around the clock.
Yay.
Yeah, so this is not coming out of, this is all, all grants. And if we did not go for these grants, somebody else would have received them. And our downtown is quite old. So also a reminder that there will be more trees going in than there are now. I want to also mention that the New Jersey League of Municipalities was virtual this year, and I attended, and I know Councilman Holman attended. We actually shared our, our password. And she went on for the water stuff, and I went on for some interesting COA updates, which really wasn't a lot of updates, just that a lot of people are still very, very confused. But then I also went on a recycling one, which was interesting, really talked about how bad single-use plastics are. So we're going to be constantly promoting that in the borough as we always do to keep our environmental education up and, and current as much as possible. Our December newsletter is coming out. It always has, has a lot of great information, so that should be coming out in the next week or so. And then I also wanted to say, please, everybody, attend the water meeting on December 9. It is super important. I know Councilwoman Holman has put in so much time, and it's very, very interesting, and it's very, very important. And it's really, it's really important that the Allendale residents know what's going on with the water in our town, as well as what's going on in the whole entire state. So that's it. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you for all your work. Matt, we still have some time. You want to give your report?
Absolutely. The committee has not met since our last council meeting, but I'm hoping to get something on the calendar for hopefully next week. We may not have had an official meeting, but the committee has been very busy. As the mayor mentioned, we had a call last week, which included the entire committee and the borough's auditor, Paul Lurch. We're starting work on the budget already. That's what that call was about, and working on the special emergency, the COVID-19 special emergency, which we're talking about this evening. Department heads started turning in their initial budget request worksheets. Once we have those, we can really see how much more work we have to do. Other than that, we've been working on some personnel matters, a couple of contracts, and apart from all that, status quo.
Great. Thank you very much, Matt. Councilman Stouch?
Oh, yes. I referred in Mayor Bernstein. Before I start, I want to echo Liz Holman's request, I guess, that the Allendale residents attend next Wednesday's water meeting. It's easy to take our drinking water for granted. It's been reliably delivered to our houses for less than a penny per gallon for, you know, decades. And I just hate to have anybody take it for granted and be shocked when you run into problems. I think local participation in your local water system will help educate yourself, and it'll help the town in general. And with regard to Council President Wilsinski, I want to thank her for all the things she does. It's, it's, you know, it's amazing how many balls she has juggling in the air. But the attending of the recycling program at the virtual league meeting is a great thing. You know, recycling is near and dear to me, dating back to the 1980s. And I appreciate her continued commitment and effort to improve Allendale's recycling program. As you know, Mark Sabastiano and I have been working to see about getting Styrofoam recycled. And Mark is going to, at the end of the meeting, during the public comment, the, the regular meeting, give a little update on what surrounding towns are doing. And I think the Styrofoam is something that's moving forward slowly, and Mark will comment on that. With regard to the DPW report, the, you know, we're, we're wrapping up the fall season. The curb side leaf pickup is still going on. We're still accepting leaves at the recycling center on the weekend. As Amy mentioned, the holiday decorations were put up in the downtown district, which makes it all look a lot nicer when you're driving through. We took delivery of a brand-new street sweeper, and we started using it this past Tuesday. And having our own street sweeper again is going to give us much more control about being able to do it when we need. The baseball fields, the sprinkler systems have all been winterized, which is an important step. And the, the borough properties have all received their, their winter cleanup. So at the risk of jinxing ourselves, you know, we're prepared for winter. And the amazing thing is that Ron Kistner and the entire DPW team has been able to deliver all this through this year with all the craziness and, and still come in under budget. So I want to thank, thank everybody who's been involved in that, and I'll end my report there. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Stouch, I thank you. It's a great report, and I concur. Director of Operations Ron Kistner and his team, yeah, he's, he does what he does and, and, you know, making, doing more with less, et cetera. We are very grateful for that. So it's a good thing that, I'm happy that you included it in your report. So I think we are near the witching hour at 7:58, so I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So move, Stouch.
Second.
Second, Steve?
Steve, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, everyone. Thank you. We'll be back in two minutes with the regular session.
This conference will now be recorded.
Great. It's like deja vu all over again, right? Good evening, everyone. It's 8 o'clock, and this is the December 3, 2020 regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. At this time, we ask the public to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak. We'll advise you at the appropriate time. Michelle, if you can please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the November 30 of 2020 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great. Thank you very much. And now if we can all rise, please rise to salute the flag, which is over here now. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, so I would request a motion to approve the October 22nd, 2020 work and regular session minutes.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. I thought that was, we're missing something.
Yep, yep, we are. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
I will abstain.
That's a roll call.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Liz.
I'm here. I'm here, but I'm not rolling.
Liz is here.
Okay. Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you very much. Okay, now we will approve the minutes. The work and regular session minutes from October 22nd, 2020, and these are, these are the ones that Councilwoman Holman will be abstaining. So I would request a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Now I will abstain, but I'm here.
Okay. Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Great. So now we open the meeting to the public for public comment on agenda items only. So if it's not on the agenda, you wait till the last time, but this would be for agenda items only. So is there anyone who wishes to be heard on agenda items?
Hi, yes, Mayor Bernstein. It's Liz White. I'd love to ask you a question about an ordinance you got.
Hi, Liz.
Hi. I see you have an amendment to the promotion of officers. What specifically are you amending?
So Ray, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, and actually, it's for adoption, so there will be a public hearing on that item as well this evening. What it is, is I think I mentioned when you were doing the agenda review, Mayor, is this ordinance objectifies the criteria for promotion to the positions of Sergeant, Lieutenant, Captain, and Chief of Police. So it sets forth specific criteria by way of testing, by way of interviews, by way of other credentials, and then provides.
Ray, I'm sorry. Ray, I'm sorry. I'm going to interrupt you. I understand what the ordinance is. My question is, what is, what was changed from the previous ordinance, which we had, to this ordinance? What changes specifically did you make to this ordinance?
I don't have the other one in front of me to give you a verbatim on that, Liz, but it's wholesale. It's, it's, I'll call it a multi-page ordinance that sets forth all of those objective criteria, takes out a little bit of the subjectivity in terms of recommendations from the police department. Actually, I could be headed to the book, and I could try to answer your question more specifically.
No, no, that's okay. I just, I, I was thinking that it would be an easy answer, but I guess.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's even a revision. It's really a wholesale reworking of that ordinance.
Yeah, I'd be very interested to know specifically what was changed. I would assume, you know, that, that that was taken through the Public Safety Committee. Am I correct?
That would be correct.
Correct.
Uh huh. Okay. Yeah, I would really like to know what specifically changed from the old ordinance to the new ordinance.
Right. And Liz, Mayor Emeritus Liz White, as you can appreciate, Borough Attorney Ray Wiss said that we should have this to protect the borough, to make sure that we had an objective.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
And so.
I just thought it would be, I thought it would be an easy answer, but obviously not. Okay. I'll, I'll go look at it myself then. Thank you. Don't need to take any more time on it. It's fine. I'll, I'll look at it on my end. Okay? No worries. Thank you.
And Liz, the section that previously existed is 26-25, which was a one paragraph ordinance.
Right.
Which basically said that the council, upon nomination of the appropriate council committee, Public Safety, obviously, in this case, shall make all promotions. This gives the criteria for making those promotions. So while there was a mechanism in 26-25, in terms of the actual criteria, other than the eligibility criteria of being employed for three years in order to be promoted, there was little or nothing in the ordinance.
Okay.
Beyond that disservice, what do you look to? And as you, as you see from this ordinance, there are multiple criteria specified, and those criteria are weighted in terms of the percent to really give an objective outcome as opposed to a subjective one.
Okay, because I had thought that it was a little bit longer, Ray, but I, you know, obviously, I've been out of the mix for a while, dear, so I couldn't be specific about it. But I'm assuming, I'm assuming that, I'm assuming this was taken from probably general other ordinances used in other municipalities?
Actually, what I had provided to the Public Safety Committee was a series of ordinances, almost like a menu, probably three, four, five ordinances that different municipalities have utilized, you know, in the county. And then the committee had to make judgments in terms of what elements should be included and what should not be included, how it wanted to weight the process. So you're correct, but it was more of an amalgam of several options, a menu, if you will, that the committee had to consider.
Great. And so, Ray, in your opinion, then, obviously, one of the biggest issues that municipalities face are legal consequences of promotions. And I'm assuming that you feel this ordinance will allow the borough to be properly protected, have better protection with this ordinance. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, you know, as we both know, there's no limit, human ingenuity is boundless when it comes to instituting litigation. So it's not totally preventative, but.
Right.
The reason that most municipalities have been adopting objective ordinances is because there has been a proliferation of promotional lawsuits. So in order to better defend the process, the objectification, the listing of the criteria and the objectification of those criteria becomes very, very important in defending it. So while an agreement can always sue, what we're looking to is put the borough in a better position to defend if that ever happens.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Ray.
Great.
Ari?
Yes?
I'm wondering if, that Liz did spark a question, actually, in my mind. I don't know if now's the appropriate time, but do the SOPs that the police have in their, like, in their documents, will it mirror the same promotional ordinance? Like, will their, because they, I think they keep SOPs also. So those would presumably have to mirror our ordinance.
No, they would be, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but answering the question. They would be separate and apart. The SOPs are commonly really called Rules and Regulations of the Police Department. They govern the conduct of the department. The province of hiring and promotions is the governing bodies. So theirs would not even address that issue.
So they should not have SOPs that have anything to do with promotions?
It's not their province at all.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard on agenda items? Not seeing anyone. We will close the meeting to the public for agenda items. Ordinance for second reading and public hearing, 20-18, which we discussed in the work session. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
Sure. The following ordinance published herewith was first read by title only on October 8th, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. This is ordinance 20-18, an ordinance amending and supplementing Article II, Chapter 26-25 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale.
Great. Open the floor for public comment on ordinance 20-18. Not seeing anyone, I would request the council member to make a motion to move, to pass, and adopt on second and final reading ordinance 20-18. Notice of same shall be published according to law.
Moved, O'Connell.
Thank you, Ed. I request a second.
Second, O'Toole.
Thank you, Matt. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Great. The resolutions, we went over the six resolutions during our work session. The resolutions will be voted on separately. So Resolution 20-256, request a motion to authorize COVID-19 special emergency. Request a motion to approve.
So moved, O'Toole.
Thank you. Second?
Holman.
Thank you. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Resolution 20-257, authorize COVID-19 special emergency, special emergency resolution, NJSA 48-colon 4-53, request a motion to approve.
So moved, O'Toole.
Thanks, Matt. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Next, 20-258, authorize capital budget amendment, request a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Second, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Those resolutions. So now we go to the introduction of the ordinances?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I might suggest there that since there are so many to be read by title that they be handled singularly, whether it's one or two, putting them together is, is okay, but I think I would give it back. There are two, three, four, five, six. I think we should probably act separately on each one.
Each one. Okay. So we're going to do each one. There are six. We're going to do each one individually as opposed to doing them together. So Michelle, drink a lot of water.
Water's next.
What's that?
Water's next. It's 2020, not 2019.
Okay. So we're going to start with 20-19. I would request the council member to make a motion and introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 20-19, and to set the hearing for December 17th at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
O'Toole?
Thank you, Matt. A second?
Second, Strouch.
Thank you. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is 20, ordinance 20-19, an ordinance to amend Chapter 53 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale, officers and employees to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year 2020, non-union.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Great. Next, 20-20, I would request the council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 20-20, and set the hearing for December 17th, 2020 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
Yes, Holman.
Thank you, Liz. Second? Thank you, Steve. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
This is ordinance 20-20, an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise the Code of the Borough of Allendale water charges, Chapter 262-11.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, ordinance 20-21, I would request the council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 20-21, and set the hearing for December 17th, 2020 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance 20-21, bond ordinance to appropriate in additional sum of $120,000 for the acquisition of real property for affordable housing, municipal facilities, recreation, open space, and other municipal purposes in, by, and for the Borough of Allendale in the County of Bergen, New Jersey, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such additional appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
That's easy for you to say, right? It's a tongue twister.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Great. Next is ordinance 20-22. I request the council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 20-22, and set the hearing for December 17th, 2020 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building. Motion?
O'Toole?
Thank you, Matt. Second?
O'Connell.
Thank you, Ed. Michelle, you're up.
This is ordinance 20-22, an ordinance to amend Chapter 53 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale, officers and employees to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year 2020. This is for the UPSU union employees.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Great. Next is 20, ordinance 20-23. I would request that a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 20-23, and set the hearing for December 17th, 2020 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Second?
Second.
Holman.
Wilsinski?
Amy. Yep. Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance 20-23, an ordinance to repeal in its entirety. This is ordinance twenty dash twenty-three, an ordinance to repeal in its entirety, twenty-six dash thirty point three of chapter twenty-six of the borough code of the borough of Allendale and amend, supplement, and revise twenty-six dash thirty-one D of the borough code. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great. And the last one, twenty dash twenty-four, I would request that a council member make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance twenty dash twenty-four and set the hearing for December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty at eight P M or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
O'Toole?
Thank you, Matt. Second?
Second.
Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance twenty dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the borough of Allendale in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, providing for a special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA forty A colon four dash fifty-three M to fund a deficit in operations of the borough directly attributable to COVID-19, which is anticipated to be experienced by the borough in the current two thousand and twenty fiscal year. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Now we move to the consent agenda, which I reviewed in the work session. I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Strouch.
Second, Holman.
Second, Liz. Thank you. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
I'm going to abstain on item F twenty dash two sixty-one and vote yes on the balance.
Okay.
Item C.
No, my list, I'm sorry, my agenda is item F twenty-two sixty-one.
Auto corrected.
Okay, that's fine.
But yeah, it's the same resolution.
Which is fine, Steve. We just want to make sure. So it's the amendment, the lease agreement, Crown Atlantic, and on behalf of A T and T.
Yes, I'm sorry. To avoid any perceived conflict of interest, I'm abstaining on that one, even though I have no interest in it at all.
Okay.
And yes, on the balance of the consent agenda.
Yes. Okay. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Committee reports? I think everyone's gone except for me. I will go. Our COVID numbers are going up. They are going up in the state and they're going up in Allendale as well, as Councilman O'Connell spoke during his committee report. We meet weekly with the OEM department. As of from last week to this week, we had a increase of six cases in Allendale. And you just look around, it's happening, the county, state, and the country. So everyone, you need to remain vigilant, mask wearing, social distancing, hand washing, and all of those precautionary practices to reduce the spread of the virus. So we know that the winter is probably going to be very troubling and very difficult, but we need to do everything we can to reduce. We've been great in Allendale. We are historically, or not historically, but you know, since March, we've been typically on the lower side, but we need to continue the trend. Bergen County is continuing their COVID-19 testing. You can visit COVID Bergen, www.bergencovidtesting.com for dates and locations. We've also included a flyer with the information in our newsletter that will be emailed out through constant contact shortly. And for up-to-date information on the coronavirus, you can visit the state's website at covid19 nj.gov. As many of you know, Governor Murphy issued an executive order this week, which lowers the indoor gatherings to twenty-five people effective six A M on December seventh. And the only exceptions are for religious or political activities, funerals, weddings, and memorial services. Outdoor dining is unaffected by this order, but it's thirty-five degrees outside. All indoor youth and adult sports are placed on a full pause starting six A M tomorrow through January second. Northern Highlands High School has also decided to move to remote learning sessions. As a result, and not easily, the borough had to cancel certain things that we've done each year. We had to make the difficult decision to cancel the annual memorial, the annual menorah lighting, but we hope to be able to get together next year to celebrate. And the Chamber of Commerce has also had to cancel their holiday walk downtown, and we look forward to that cherished tradition once again being held next year. Holiday Observers will also, they will be having a socially distant drive-through gifts-from-Santa event on December twelfth at Crestwood Park. This year's families will drive up in their cars where they will remain the entire time and have an opportunity to visit Santa, socially distanced, of course, and to receive gifts. You can go to www.holidayobservers.org for info. And for all of these events, please understand that we, as public safety or as OEM, we've looked at them, some we've said, no, we just couldn't do it, it wasn't prudent, and some we said that we could, it could be done, provided it's done in a certain way. And we vetted it with the police and we've, the guidance from the police, and so Ron and everyone who, it's been a team effort to decide what makes sense to do and what not, and to those that we're going to do under what circumstances.
Myself, Sergeant Griffith and Troyman Staton have met with representatives from the Holiday Observers. They have a very thorough, very safe plan. Families are remaining in the cars. One car, they have barricades. The Holiday Observers themselves are self-distancing. The way they're bringing the gifts up, the way the gifts are getting put in the trunk. I had, I had ideas and their ideas and Sergeant Griffith's ideas, the Holiday Observers, again, went and beyond like then for years with their events, very safe events, could be a nice event, and they have thought of everything, to the number of cars, per number of children going across to the grandstand, cars could be even self-distancing. So it's a great event, and again, I just want to, as the director of operations and administrator, this town is very blessed to have the Holiday Observers. It's an amazing organization, and the members of that group really do a great job of, you see why a lot of them are very successful in their personal life, especially because they really do think these things out, they do care.
Right.
Very impressed with their plans.
Thank you. Right, agreed. And also, earlier, Santa's elves called me. I thought it was a disgruntled resident on streets, curbs, drainage, recycling. I thought it was one of those, but rather, it was Santa's elves called me to tell me the other day that Santa wants to ride around town on our fire truck to see where all the good children live. More information will be posted, but we're happy to report that Chief Rabino and the Fire Department have agreed to escort Santa around Allendale. So go on your front lawns on Sunday, December thirteenth, to wave high to Santa. The Allendale Women's Club is selling luminaries for residents to display on their driveways and walkways on New Year's Eve to give a bright start to two thousand and twenty-one, something we're all looking forward to. You can visit their website, allindawomensclub.org to get all of the details. Next week, or at the next meeting?
I'm sorry.
No? Right, so at the next meeting, we'll have a resolution to approve the mayor and council's reorganization for Thursday, December seventh, at seven P M. Councilwoman Wosinski and Councilman O'Connell will be sworn into the new terms, and hopefully the officers of AVAC and the Fire Department too. And we hope that all of the residents will join us virtually. And Hanukkah, right? So Hanukkah starts on next week. So to our residents who celebrate Hanukkah, on behalf of the governing body in the entire borough, we wish you a happy Hanukkah. This has been a difficult year, to say the least, and not the way I'm sure anyone hoped to be celebrating, but we do have much to be thankful for. And then we'll have time to wish everyone a Merry Christmas at our next meeting. So that is the end of my mayor's report, so we can go to staff reports. Attorney Ray Wiss?
Thank you, Mayor. As the council members attested, it's been a very busy two weeks since our last meeting. I'm sure Michelle will indicate that there have been numerous Oprah requests to her office, and we've been involved to the extent required to assist her and Tatiana Alldoes with Ron. There's been several personnel matters and property maintenance issues that have been discussed and hopefully at least addressed since our last meeting. Negotiations, two negotiations which either, one, I think culminated on tonight's agenda and one is very close to culminating. So the nice thing about that is that employees will have collective bargaining agreements in place for the upcoming three to four years, which I think is a positive for all concerned, and that is reflected on tonight's agenda, numerous ordinance revisions, contract revisions, and resolutions. And as Councilwoman Wosinski said, many of the documents required in connection with two-twenty and two-thirty are being done or very formative stages, parallel to the ongoing Land Use Board meeting. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Ray. Michelle?
So the clerk's office is just busy trying to wrap up two thousand and twenty and put everything together for two thousand and twenty-one. It is a very busy time in the office. I think everyone, you know, everyone in the borough has really been helpful and working together, and we're a great team, but especially Tatiana, John, Tatiana Markey, John Gill, and Ron Kistner. I definitely could not do it without their support and their help, and I'm grateful.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And we're grateful for you and what you do. And I know you don't like the recognition, but we all recognize it, and so, thank you. I know, you're giving me the high. Ron, anything you'd like to report?
Nice and quiet.
Okay, so now we open the meeting to the public on any matter. So for anyone who wishes to be heard on any matter, please let me know. Is there anyone there who wishes to be heard?
Yes, Colleen Brennan, two seventy-two, East Allendale.
Okay, and Mr. Thomas, I see you as well, so I'll come to you next. I'm going to respond to Colleen Brennan, then Mr. Thomas, I'll give you the floor. Okay, Colleen, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. As you remember from October, you approved our refund of taxes for, I believe it was the third quarter on our property. This was also the same night that you adopted an ordinance changing your policy that was previously adopted in two thousand and four. I have written two emails now to the mayor and council and have yet to receive a response. Your policy prior to October was to refund taxes on properties of disabled veterans up to not more than two years, notwithstanding the reason why an application could not have been filed properly. Now, as you know, we bought our property in April. We could not get licenses to prove that we were residents. We came from out of state to move to Allendale, to raise our children here in this community. I think it is very unethical that the borough has decided to hold our, our application was approved, and we should have been given the refund that was appropriate considering the policy at the time of our application approval stated that we were going to get a full refund. Your policy was not changed until after our application, not, our application was approved, I'm sorry, that you changed the policy officially and got it codified into the borough's policy.
So, and I appreciate you speaking tonight, and I appreciate the email. So, and I want to respond, and I also, we're, this is one of the matters that we're going to be going into closed session to discuss, but you've raised some points, and so I do want, we did spend a lot of time looking at this. The argument or the position that we changed the ordinance, that changed how it would be handled, is incorrect. And I, none of this is directed towards you. We spoke to Angela. Angela has been handling these applications the same way for years. There was nothing in the October resolution or ordinance that changed how your application would be handled. You're, it was approved by Angela on July thirtieth, and you were given the exemption status as of July thirtieth, and we, so...
Yes, but your policy at the time of our application approval was not changed. It is codified. It was not, it was the policy that should have been in effect and followed by the borough.
I don't, I don't know if I understand that. I don't want to, I don't want to disagree, but I hear you. I don't know that if I, but I, a couple of things. We spent, we spent a considerable amount of time with everyone involved earlier this week to try to get the facts, to then go into closed session tonight, so we could discuss it with all the members of the council. We are, what we're, what Angela was doing and what we did was to be consistent to every resident who applied for...
I'm sorry, you cut out for a portion of that.
Okay. I'm not sure where I cut out, but what we, earlier this week, we had our CFO, we had our tax assessor, we had the finance committee, director of operations, clerk, and where application was handled, same way every other application was handled, and the point of exemption was the same as every other application. And nothing of, in, nothing changed either before or after the new resolution, new ordinance, nothing changed as to how those applications were handled. So I do want you to know, there was no, let's change this to affect this, it's the same, we're trying to be...
I understand that you did not change it in order to affect us.
And so, good.
I am stating...
So then, let me just, do you also understand, and I'm not cross-examining, I just wanted, do you also understand that, so we didn't change it to affect you, and you, that it would have been the same?
Is that your policy to refund?
I think she's having technical...
Is what was changed after, on the day of that meeting, you would fall in, although the policy that was... I'm sorry, you guys are cutting out on me.
Yeah, and you're cutting out on us, and I'm sorry about that as well. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so, Ray, is there anything that you would like to add that I perhaps have omitted?
Well, the only things that I would note is that the letter from the VA, which essentially is the letter that indicates qualification, was dated July twenty-ninth.
Right.
And that's what led to the third quarter being honored, and that the addition or proof that are required to establish residence included driver's license and voter registration, and those were dated respectively, July twenty-ninth and July twentieth, so that all of the documentary evidence established the appropriate criteria for the third quarter, none of which established the appropriate criteria for a relation back. So as you indicated there, whether there was a prior ordinance that would have permitted relation back and refunds back, the criteria here that were submitted established that entitled it to the third quarter, but not the second quarter.
Right. And so, Colleen, and I said this, although I don't know, I addressed it in the work session of that meeting when it first came up, and I don't know, you might not have, you may, you may have missed the work session, which is prob, is, which is fine, but the utmost of respect to you and to your husband and you, that he was in the armed forces for twenty-three years. There's not an ounce of me which is anything but, is thankful for everything he did. Certainly, the last group that I would marginalize ever would be the veterans who fight for us. So... So our, our ruling was just, but we're dealing with the veteran's exemption, the veteran's tax exemption. So we're, our ruling and what was recommended to us and the actions taken by our tax assessor, tax collector was to be, was consistent. And it was consistent with that, how, how we treated all the prior exemption or all the prior requests. There needs to be a cutoff date and that was when the addition, indisha comes in, that's when it was approved by Angela. So I want to give you an opportunity to speak and I also want to let you know that we will be discussing it in closed session when we do go into closed session. Okay. All right. I, I can see your name and it looks green, but I can't hear you. So okay, we will, if she comes back on, I'll give her the opportunity to speak. Mr. Thomas, did you want to speak?
Yes, can I be heard?
Yes.
Mayor Bernstein, I want to pose just three questions regarding the pilot agreement before I make a statement. First, is there any possibility that the sale and transfer of the properties will occur before the pilot agreement is signed? Secondly, can the owner of the apartment building and the warehouse opt out of the pilot agreement and submit to property tax at any time during the term of the agreement? And third, will the financial terms of the pilot agreement be subject to change because of business or market conditions during the life of the agreement? Now, Mayor, you can respond to those questions later if you want to. I offer them here as a matter of record. Mayor, at this time, I am petitioning you to take two steps, which are in the best interest of the stakeholders in the 220, 230 West Crescent project. First, direct the developer to remove the future municipal building from his site plan application. That will give the borough wide latitude in determining what it will build and when it will build on its property. Second, eliminate the S growing of the three and a half million dollars, do it closing. So that that amount, less a fair market value of the lot being acquired, that amount will be received by the borough in unrestricted cash at the time of closing. Now that the borough's ownership of the new municipal building and lot has been confirmed, Hampshire has no further interest in its design, construction or financing. Mayor Bernstein, there will be no objection to these two actions. They constructively address issues, questions and concerns about the project. You have the authority and I submit the responsibility now to take these steps with the benefit of all the stakeholders. I ask you to act as early as tomorrow morning when the opportunity exists. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. Anyone else wish to be heard? For public comment? And Colleen, I, you're, you're, you look, you're there and you're green, but I can't hear you. Do I, did you have anything else that you wanted to say?
Perhaps there, we could at least indicate on the record that after the closed session, right? The governing body will make a determination, not this evening, because it's just a closed session discussion. And she'll be advised of where things go from here.
Right. Okay. Good.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. So anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone close to the public, for public comment. Thank you very much, everyone.
Erica.
I'm sorry. Hi Erica. Okay. Please state your name and address.
Erica Laylenberg, 100 Midwood Avenue. And first of all, I wanted to thank everybody for all the work that you're doing. I know that you're all working very hard. And I greatly appreciate that. I, I'd like to ask some questions about the budget for 220, 230. And I know that it's constrained, but I was wondering if the budget was just set with the, the $3,500,000. And also I was wondering if the town owns the building and, and we're paying for it. Is there some flexibility in terms of being able to have the things that we would like for it? Like the court chambers being in it, you know, all the council offices there and possibly really expanding and developing so that we could have something that resembles a senior center. So I was wondering if, if that's possible, especially if we have monies left over from the remediation, if insurance covers that or there's a lawsuit that covers that. There might be hundreds of thousands of dollars that, you know, we might be able to have and maybe money from grants. So I, I was just wondering if maybe you could explain a little bit to me about this. Is, you know, this basically Hampshire, is, is it the budget with within that 3.5 million or you know, is there room for, you know, the borough being able to you know, make some additions and, and expand things?
So I'll address that, Erica. So the, the borough in our, in our negotiation with Hampshire decided that we wanted a new space, a municipal space and a community center. And the $3.5 million was part of that whole transaction. Now, as far as being on budget, we don't have all those numbers yet. As you saw, we just started presenting the plans. However, it looks like we may be, you know, close to being on budget. The, the part about the municipal part, the municipal court and municipal chambers being there would put us actually over budget. There is a lot of state mandates for courts especially that really would drive the budget to the point where it wouldn't be feasible. So once we, you know, talked about it and evaluated everything and looked at all the needs of the community, we actually kind of think it works out better this way. That we do have this space. I mean, as you know, there's no space in the borough and if we didn't have this space, we would, we would lose it. And that, that would be it. There's really no other space. The only place for anybody to have meetings or to gather is our existing Borough Hall. And the council chambers up there, you know, is, is not that big. And then obviously the downstairs of the offices are, are very, very quite small. There's only one, one, one small room. Extra money, I would love to say there was going to be extra money to be able to do a lot of different things. And I don't know if that's going to be the case. Usually when you're building things, it's not, but we are doing something that's called a guaranteed maximum price. So we're really, you're trying very, very hard to make sure that we stay within that 3.5 million. There may be some things that we might have to carve out like a generator or, or things like that that we might have to do it at a, at a separate time, but for the most part, we are, you know, doing our best to stay within the guaranteed maximum price, which is 3.5 million. And it's, it's not, we're not going to be able to take that away and, 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 you know, take the money and, and build and, and build our own somewhere else. It doesn't work that way. It's kind of like part of the whole transaction that we've worked out from them from the very beginning and that we're still working out with them within this transaction. I hope that answered your question.
Okay. I just want to try to understand some things. Thank you.
Sure. I mean, feel free to email me with any questions in the future as well.
Great, Erica. Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, Mayor Ritz. Mark Sabastano from 2231 Place.
Hi, Mark. How are you?
Good, thank you. I'm sorry I joined the meeting so late. My work went far later than I expected today.
If you want to catch it on, on audio tomorrow.
Yes, I will catch up on it. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Amy for her response to my email and all the information she provided regarding my traffic concerns.
Anytime.
And also, if I may, Jim, the, did you mention about the styrofoam? And is there anything that you would still like me to add after your, your comments?
I only indicated that you would be giving a brief update on what Hillsdale and Fair Lawn are going to be doing. So you can take it from there, Mark.
Okay. Well, then very briefly, Jim and I have both still been pursuing this and we've discovered that Hillsdale, Fair Lawn and Rutherford are all having a collection just after the holidays. And certainly want to be part of that effort and encourage the citizens of Allendale to set aside their styrofoam and bring them to either one or both of those collections. So I'd like to work with the council to somehow establish communication to everybody in town about that. And hopefully that will be a great event that will bring this more into the public eye and let them know that this is something that can in fact be recycled. We will also trying to establish a contact with the Green Team and Sustainable New Jersey with the Burton County Utilities Authority to get their attention and prod the county government to make this a county.
Awesome.
Great, Mark. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So I think that's it for public comment. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 20 dash 265, which authorizes the governing body to enter into closed session under attorney client privilege to discuss updates on contract negotiations with PBA Local Number 217. Attorney client privilege regarding potential litigation and prospective personnel in the police department. I would request for a motion. Steve, second?
Second, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great. And I just want to say it again to the public that the governing body will be entering into closed session and will only reconvene, reconvene to adjourn the meeting once the closed session portion is finished. And no formal action other than adjourning the meeting will be taken. So with that said, we're going to go into closed session. Thank you very much.
This conference will now be recorded.
Unbelievably, the time is now 9:54. And the regular session has resumed. And with that said, I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
Some moves.
A second?
Homan.
Thank you, Liz. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.